To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pope.
Here.
Mr. Captain.
Here.
Ms. Perrinella. Ms. Giannakos.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Bender.
Here.
Ms. Cecilberg.
Here.
Mr. Casio. Mr. Penisi. In accordance with the terms of the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was closed in an old school building, the administration building, borough service office, public library, four newspapers, and tap into on January 5th, 2023. Please be advised there is no smoking on school grounds inside or outside at any time. Please silence all electronic devices. And pursuant to District Policy Number 0167, each statement made by participants shall be limited to three minutes duration, and no participant may speak more than once at the same time.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Penisi. Well, this is a happy occasion, but it's also very sad. We have our last student representative presentation from Sarah Tadala, who's been with us since September, and they graduated. Sarah.
Thank you for that warm welcome. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to share some of the events that South Plainfield High School has been implementing throughout mid-May into June. Begin with South Plainfield High School's annual Cultural Heritage Day that took place in May. This event showcases a multitude of cultures, backgrounds, and traditions that our students and staff had to offer. The students were able to bring in cultural dishes and desserts, were encouraged to wear their unique custom clothing, and perform traditional dances or songs from their home lands. Cultural Heritage Day is one of the most looked forward to events in our school year, and we thank everyone who is involved that helped us fight our school's adversity. Secondly, the Student Council held their final pep rally in the end of May, which wrapped up the years-long Battle of the Classes. Throughout the year, all classes were given the opportunity to accumulate points by participating in hallway decorating contests, penny wars, and competitive sporting events. The last pep rally honored the spring senior athletes and coaches, as well as all participants were invited to play in our unique games to win the battle. After accumulating all the points, the seniors have won the Battle of the Classes. However, all grades had an amazing time at our final pep rally. Additionally, the Booster Club was able to host their annual Senior Athletes Dinner after a long-awaited time due to our fandom. The senior letter winners were congratulated with South Plainfield thoughtful gifts, motivational speeches, and final goodbyes and thank yous from our coaches and administration. And on that note, speaking of honoring our seniors, a huge thank you to everyone who put together the senior scholarship ceremony and to our generous donors and organizations that gave these scholarships to our senior academically. Next, the second annual Day of Service was held on June 9th. This district-wide event showcased our dedication to volunteerism and community service. The high school had a very busy day of volleyball tournaments, library escape rooms, basketball games, court full tournaments, and readathons, and finally, our big color room finale. The high school proceeds were over $2,000, and they will be going to various charitable organizations such as the United Nations Children's Emergency Fund, JDRF for Diabetes Research, Special Olympics, and Disease Epidemic Research. We thank our students, administrators, faculty, and of course, our community members for helping make this day a huge success. More so, there were a number of exciting events for our seniors that happened this year or will be taking place in the upcoming heats, such as our senior prom, which was held at the Marygold on June 1st a few weeks ago. That was a huge success. Our yearbook signing event, which was held earlier this afternoon in this library. Our senior barbecue and our senior sunrise held at Jost Field next week. And finally, our graduation practices along with our long-awaited graduation day on Thursday. And lastly, I wanted to take this final opportunity to say thank you to each and every board member and administrator who have given me this opportunity to represent the high school's student body. This position not only helped me grow as a leader, but also helped guide me to be able to see from a new perspective of leadership. My passion for community service and public speaking intensely increased over this year, and that would have not been possible without the support of you all. I'm honored to be the first ever student representative, and I encourage the next class and the generations of our high school to come to be more involved in this community at the respectable level. Again, thank you very much, and have a good night.
Sarah, thank you. You did a great job this entire year. You made us proud. We have a little extra to add in tonight. I would like to also congratulate the student broadcasting class for winning a PSA contest from New Jersey Manufacturers Insurance. They won a $5,000 prize for their PSA, and also an additional prize of $2,000 from the county was also awarded for their PSA. So I'm going to ask Mr. Casio if you would please play the video. There you go.
According to the CDC, teens are more likely than adults to make critical errors that can lead to serious crashes. Remember to trust your instincts and keep your focus on the road ahead. For more safe driving tips and initiatives, visit the Middlesex County Comprehensive Traffic Safety Program website by scanning the QR code on the screen.
We have one more, but hang on. Nope. Look if you can put those back on. Can you put that back on? Thank you. Mr. Casio, I just want to thank you for really bringing our broadcasting class and the entire program to what it is today. You've built this program for us, and for those of you who don't know, Mr. Casio is not leaving our district, but he is becoming an administrator. So I know that your class has been heartbroken, but celebrating with you as you're leaving. And can I mention what your brother sent? Here.
Which specific?
So Mr. Casio, Tom had sent me a screenshot of what you did to commemorate your time as a broadcast teacher. Do you mind if I mention? So Mr. Casio had a tattoo of the coordinates of the broadcast room.
Oh, wow.
That's how much he loved that program, Mr. Casio. So thank you. You're a fantastic teacher, and you'll be an amazing administrator. Well, we have another wonderful acknowledgement tonight. Tonight, we'll be acknowledging our South Plainfield faculty and staff retirees. These dedicated individuals have spent many years working with our students, impacting their lives, not only as their teachers and paraprofessionals, but as mentors and allies. Your life's work has created a brighter future for all of us. We'd like to play a video of your administrators performing their恳挚的演讲 when you're ready.
Hi, everybody. I'm Deara, principal of Roosevelt School, and I'm here to talk about Pat Remsing and her years of service to our district and to our school, Roosevelt School. Pat Remsing has spent with us 20 years, and if I could describe her, do you remember the movie The Horse Whisperer? She is basically the child of Whisperer. It doesn't matter what child came through, you know, if a child was crying, you know, hyperactive, jumping off the walls, screaming, yelling, she was, it didn't look like she was doing much to be able to calm that child down and redirect the child. She just had a special way and gifts, really, to be able to do it. And it's truly a gift that she has. And now, losing her is going to be a real, it's going to be tough to replace she had. But the good news for her is her 20 years of service here is only going to continue for her as a grand, because now she's going to be the care of the grandchild, and she's been through all of those years of service to good use in her own life. So best of luck to you there. We're going to miss you very much. Good luck.
Hello, massive public, and congratulations. First, like I said, congratulations on your retirement. You have reached the finish line. Secondly, remember retirement is the world's longest coffee break. It was great working with you. You made an everlasting impact on the children as well as on you, and I wish you all the best in your new journey in life. Thank you and enjoy your coffee break.
Hello and congratulations, Mrs. Dupet. It's been some time since I last saw you, for you can never be forgotten. It was a pleasure working with you. You brought an extensive amount of knowledge and was a positive influence on everyone. I hope retirement has brought you the chance to do whatever it is that you always wanted to do but didn't get to. Again, thank you very much and all the best to you.
Good evening, everyone. This is Lisa Cook, supervisor of transportation, and tonight I have the privilege of recognizing retiree Carlos Callejo, who is retiring from being a school bus driver. We'd like to say congratulations, enjoy your retirement, and thank you for your dedication to the South Plainfield School District.
Good evening, Dr. Tanzi and members of the Board of Education. Tonight, I have the pleasure to speak about Mr. John Orphan, who is retiring after 36 and a half years of teaching, 35 of those years in South Plainfield School. Mr. Orphan joined South Plainfield as a teacher at Franklin School, area manager of chess club, school drama productions, safety control, developed a peer mediation program, and an after-school peer tutoring program. Mr. Orphan then joined Grand School as a math and science teacher in 2003, and he's been here ever since. Mr. Orphan continued to work on the drama productions, managing the chess club, as well as coordinating the fifth and sixth grade trips. During my time at Grand School, I'm not sure that I've ever passed by a conversation with principal Orphan or his next smiling. His energy and charisma are incredible. The students feed off this energy with a transitive success inside and inside of the classroom. The students and the staff at Grand School will sincerely miss him and his smile. Best of luck in retirement, Mr. Orphan. Congratulations, and well deserved. I also want to wish all the other retirees happy and healthy retirement. Thank you and have a great night.
Good evening, Dr. Tanzi, members of our Board of Education. I am Dr. Hydock. I am the Kennedy School principal, and I have the honor of speaking about Mrs. Sutton, who served our school district for over 34 years. I actually had the opportunity to work with Mrs. Sutton for the last five years of her career, and I can generally say that she was one of the most kindest people that I've worked with in my career. Mrs. Sutton brought a lot to our school each day. Number one, she brought that sense of family. She considers her family, her personal family, at the top of her list in importance, and that's one of the reasons why she retired from our district is to spend more time with them. We know, Mrs. Sutton, that you're spending lots of time with your family. We see through your pictures and your stories, but we certainly miss you here. Mrs. Sutton, while she served our building, she was known to be one of our lead investigators in case something was going on with the kids. She helped us solve cases, and she was our school nurse. She sometimes had to be the principal. She did it all, as most secretaries do. We know secretaries are so important in our schools, and Mrs. Sutton was certainly one of the most valuable pieces to our main office and our school building. We have the slogan Kennedy Rocks, and certainly, we believe Mrs. Sutton rocks because all she gave to our school and our kids each day. We know you loved our kids here at Kennedy, and I know that you certainly miss them. We miss you too, but we are very happy that you're retired now, you're able to spend time with your family, and come back when you can to our concerts and our programs. We no longer have our variety show, which you loved, but we do have lots of other things that I'm sure you're going to find very special as you keep coming back and visiting our school. So, Mrs. Sutton, thank you for your service to our schools, most importantly, service to our students. I had the honor to work with you for the last five years, especially the day you walked out of our district as a retired employee. I am honored to be working with some wonderful people today, but I look back and see our time together was valuable to me as an employee working with you. So thank you, Mrs. Sutton. Enjoy your retirement, and congratulations to all the other retirees and the individuals being recognized this evening. Have a good night, everyone.
Good evening. My name is Joffis Sill, and I proudly serve as principal of South Plainfield High School. First, I'd like to congratulate all of our retirees this evening for their outstanding contributions to our school community and thank them for their years of service. At South Plainfield High School, we have four of our team members retiring at the end of this school year, and I'd like to take a moment to speak about them and thank them for all that they've done for us. First is one of our nurses, Ms. Artist DeCamp. Mr. DeCamp has been a nurse with the South Plainfield School District for as long as I can remember. She has been nothing but a professional, uplifting, and dedicated team member. Everyone, everyone will miss her daily contributions. She does nothing but ask really great questions, she advocates for kids, and she is the first to run into a bad situation and make it better. So I want to thank Mr. DeCamp for all that she's done for all of us and wish her well as she moves forward on the next phase of what she's up to. Our next retiree is Ms. Barlix. Ms. Robin Barlix has been a paraprofessional and a duty aide, and actually worked at our tech department, a number of different capacities in her time here at South Plainfield, always willing to help out different students in need, making connections with students, has most recently been involved in our life program. We're certainly going to miss all of her contributions and professionalism. She knows the kids, she knows the school, and has been in the community for a very long time, so I thank Mrs. Barlix for all that she's done for us. Our next retiree is Ms. Terry Pledgie. Ms. Pledgie has been a longtime secretary in the school system. First, she was a secretary over at the high school, and for many years, she was a principal secretary here at the high school, and I know firsthand what it involved, and incredible job she's done, both working with her as a teacher, working as an administrator. For the last couple of years, she's been over in the guidance department, helping out, bringing her expertise and knowledge there. We are absolutely going to miss her, and we'll be taking every note we can along the way as she attends the last couple of days with us. So thank you, Mrs. Pledgie, for all that you've done. Our last teacher is Ms. Porzio. Ms. Porzio has been a science teacher at South Plainfield High School for many, many, many years. Ms. Porzio has actually founded our forensics program. It's a longstanding program here at the high school on top of teaching biology and a number of other courses. Students to this day come back, we have guest speakers, we get people from the prosecutor's office. She's been longstanding with our passion and pink for a cure for breast cancer throughout her time here, and she was also very in the early phases of our volleyball program when it started here at South Plainfield High School. Ms. Porzio has been a lasting, lasting influence on so many students, so I thank her for her years of service and wish her well and all that she moves forward with. That's all we have for the high school, but again, I want to congratulate and thank all of our retirees and wish them well in all their future endeavors. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm highly honored to deliver the Franklin farewell speech to four retirees. As the 2022-23 school year closes, we are bidding farewell to the exceptional educators with over eight, total of 112 years of service here in South Plainfield. I would first like to thank Mr. Glenn Farisi for his 32 years of dedication to music here in South Plainfield. Aside from teaching general music to students, Mr. Farisi has conducted and directed over 100 elementary concerts and assisted with many of the events here at Franklin School and throughout the district, including the All District Music Festival, Veterans Day, and Grandparents' Day, most recently, our Days of Service. Mr. Farisi also served as safety control advisor, instilling responsibility and respect in our oldest students and guiding them on how to be leaders and role models for younger students. I hope that this is a source of pride for Mr. Farisi, as his hard work and dedication have inspired many students to play instruments, sing in our choirs, and move on to higher education in the fine arts. We thank him for all his efforts and hard work and express our sincerest gratitude to him for all his contributions to our students' education and development over the years. We wish Mr. Farisi all the best retirement brings, may he find opportunities to travel and dedicate himself to playing the trumpet, enjoying music outside the classroom. Mrs. Sharon Hunt began her teaching career as a kindergarten teacher in Florida before returning to New Jersey to marry and start her family. During the 1980s, Mrs. Hunt took computer training classes and began work as a consultant to large companies, training corporate employees with technology software, and developing and writing technology manuals. As computers gained popularity, Mrs. Hunt taught computers in the North Plainfield and South Plainfield's adult schools, working around her family's schedule. In 2002, Mrs. Hunt merged her early career in education with her technology career, enjoying the South Plainfield School District after being approached by our former district technology supervisor, Mrs. Dogle, about a computer teacher opening at Franklin School. Since that time, Mrs. Hunt has been teaching our students, first as a computer teacher, and evolving into our STEM teacher and supporting mathematics-based skills in the classroom. Mrs. Hunt's skills and passion for computer technology education made learning engaging and fun for every student. Mrs. Hunt's willingness and flexibility made the ever-changing role of teacher of technology look easy, as we moved from desktops to iPads to laptops, then Chromebooks, and now robots. After two decades of teaching, Mrs. Hunt is now on to enjoy her retirement, just in time for the arrival of her first grandchild, Evie, and spend plenty of time with her family at the shore. Mrs. Jane Bishop is closing out a 34-year career here in South Plainfield, 35 years if you count her student teaching experience at Kennedy School. Mrs. Bishop taught at Riley School before transferring to Franklin 22 years ago. Most of her years were spent as a third-grade teacher, though she also taught fourth grade for a couple of years. Mrs. Bishop was a student council advisor and a union representative here at Franklin, lending her experience and leadership for the betterment of the building, staff, and students. Mrs. Bishop also served as a cooperating teacher for future teachers and a mentor to new teachers. As South Plainfield stories often come full circle, Mrs. Bishop mentored Mrs. Kylie Jackson's choir, who was once a student in that student teaching classroom Mrs. Bishop was in when she started her career at Kennedy School. It has been told that Mrs. Bishop's favorite thematic unit to teach was Westport Expansion: Pioneer Life, down to teaching students about washing clothes with washboards, churning butter, and painting for gold. The classroom came to life and was like a pioneer museum. Mrs. Bishop will hopefully be enjoying her retirement on the beach in Florida, raising golden retriever puppies, or perhaps walking on the Oregon Trail as the pioneers did 200 years ago. Mrs. Mary Roger began her teaching career in South Plainfield as a fourth-grade teacher at Franklin School in 1998. After about 10 years, Mrs. Roger worked in the district as a staff developer, literacy coach, and ELA teacher at Grand School before returning to Franklin. Mrs. Roger has most recently supported our students as a reading interventionist, helping her readers to build and strengthen their foundational reading skills. Mrs. Roger has supported Franklin School in our district through her work on committees such as DAF, climate and culture, and peace. Her ability to remain calm while remaining honest and clear has made Mrs. Roger an effective union representative, but is well-respected by colleagues and administrators alike. Mrs. Roger has also spent much of her career serving on the King University Diversity Council, which is no surprise given her kind and generous nature. With all of her experience and insight, we hope that Mrs. Roger will continue to consult with our Franklin School Peace Committee work and help us as we further our mission that she helped us build. As Mrs. Roger retires, she leaves behind 25 years of full-time teaching service. However, she will not be bored with seven grandchildren and a love of plants and gardening. To Glenn, Sharon, Jane, and Mary, on behalf of Franklin School, we wish you good health and many years of retired life ahead. May it be filled with beautiful memories. Congratulations to you all. To the South Plainfield 2022-23 retiree, best wishes to you as you move forward into the next chapter of your lives. Thank you.
I'm going to ask, as I call them, the retirees to please come up to the podium. I have a certificate for you, and I apologize if I'm leaving anybody out, but these are the people who responded. If not, we'll make sure you get your certificate, and I'm sure that Victoria will want a great picture of the... Patty Porzio. Congratulations. John Orphan. Mary Roger. Glenn Farisi. Jane Bishop. Pat Poglin. Nancy, ready? I have, this is our hard bus driver, Carlos. I'm sorry, that's the only people that I have listed that are on here that responded, but if you are a retiree and you're out there, please stand up so that we can honor you and come on over.
I want to apologize for relaying my phone, or I had to take my son to pediatrician for a check on his... So here we are. I'd like to present some milestone awards to two current board members from the New Jersey School Board Association. First, I'd like to call up Mr. Perrinella.
All right, Mr. Cassio.
All right, John Lightrong, resident of South Plainfield, has now served on the board for ten years. Having been elected to four terms, John has been nothing but a humble gentleman while serving in the South Plainfield community. John holds an extensive resume, which includes serving over twenty-five years in the New Jersey Public School System as a mathematics teacher, vice principal, and high school principal. He's also a member of the New Jersey Bar of the New Jersey, the New York Board, and the United States District Court of the New Jersey Bar, and is currently employed as legal counsel for the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association. Having been nothing but an asset to this board over the years, this recognition is well-deserved. Congratulations, John. Next up, I'd like to call Mr. Ferisi. Peo, a South Plainfield resident for over sixty-three years, has now served on the South Plainfield Board of Education for twenty of those years. Peo is a level-headed, commanding voice on this board. He has served over forty years in education as an athletic director, teacher, coach, administrator, and superintendent. His leadership on this board, whether it's attached to a title or not, does not go unnoticed. This recognition is also well-deserved, and congratulations, Peo. I'd also like to note that these two gentlemen served in the South Plainfield community without fanfare nor seatpats in the back or photo ops, and I know are probably embarrassed that I'm up here talking about them. You have served as role models to me and others on this board. For that, on behalf of the board members, the students, staff, taxpayers, and myself, I thank you.
I have to say something, I just want everybody to care about this, this award too. I review the agenda every week with the superintendent before it comes here, and before I went to a wedding in Florida, I reviewed this agenda, and the names weren't on there. There was nothing on there. I got back, I got the new agenda, and all the little we hold, the name's on there. So you know, I immediately called and said, "What's going on?"
I sent you the voicemail.
And the reason I do, you know, I said that is because as much as this, you know, means that I served those twenty years was important to me as broadly did it. You know, we didn't do it for this. I didn't even know how many years I did it until I told them. We did it, you know, for exactly what you saw tonight. The people who need the accolades are really the ones that we did tonight, the staff, the teachers, administrators, who were directly with the teachers, with the students, and do everything, our superintendent. And, you know, they're the ones who should be given all the credit. You know, we, you know, we set policy and make sure that the districts are doing well, and make sure that who we hire here does a great job. And on that note, now I just want to get a little bit back to the superintendent, which no one has heard yet, I don't think, that she was also picked Superintendent of the Year for Newsex County. I'm honored that Tommy did this, but I'm more honored that I was able to do it. A lot of the teachers that I've known and my children have had, and, you know, it's just a humbling job, and I know why John does it, and we all talk about it, is because you know, we love the town, we love the kids, and it's our life education. So, thanks, Tommy. Thank you.
I actually have one last thing for my superintendent's report. I would like to thank the students, faculty, staff, administrators, grounds, crew, Tom Wiegans, and everyone that he supervises, Erica Simpson, and her crew from Arumark, and all who helped make the Day of Service a wonderful success for our community. We completed numerous service projects and raised funds for various charities near and dear to our hearts. We can only imagine next year's event will be even bigger and better, so thank you for supporting this South Plainfield Day of Service.
Moving on, agenda additions or additions? That would just be for this meeting. Seeing none, can I have any public comments on this agenda only? Seeing none. Move to another item that we have to approve, Finance A, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Discussion? Vote, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Perrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis? Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Yes.
You stay to go stay?
Yeah.
I guess. Whatever I have to do, I have to.
Okay, any public comments on the item?
Yes.
I can reject.
Say your name, please.
My name is Deidre McIntyre. I'm from Shavyside Place. I'm a sixteen-rail resident of South Plainfield, twenty-four-rail resident of New Jersey, a native of Long Island, and I'm here to speak about the middle school and its processes for placing students into honors curriculum. I'm specifically here to speak about my daughter, Nina. She is a rising eighth grader. She has attended the district since kindergarten year. I'm going to submit this because I want to talk about something that is not only what I have. I have an eleven-page running record. I use that phrase with intention. I have taught in this district for one year. You saw me run to go speak to Mary Rogers, because she's the teacher in this district that taught me. I am very frustrated. I feel that replacement of students at the honors level, beginning in the middle school, is very subjective and not quantitative whatsoever. I stayed from the beginning of the seventh, eighth grade, seventh grade school year that I led my daughter. The track for my daughter was for her to be placed in honors since she wasn't placed in seventh grade, and I understood the reason why. I told my daughter, I said, "Your only problem is you turn in homework late. That's it." Because I know how to assess things, because I'm a public educator, and I taught in this district for one year. I taught in Brooklyn for four. I can look at it, and I can see where her issue was. She said, "Mom, no problem." Didn't have to get on her. All of a sudden, the grades flew up. Came close to the end of the third marking period, right before we went on break, third marking period ended April seventeenth, right before we went on break. I emailed her math teacher, Ms. Wetzel. I subsequently emailed her guidance counselor. I said, "It looks like she may not meet that ninety-five metric. By my summation, it's ninety-four point eight. I want to know what are the steps that would allow her to enter into honors math." They responded back, and it's all in here, you know, ninety-five is the metric. Grades came out, ninety-five point one. I subsequently contacted right after she met the metric. Will there be a recommendation for honors math? The response back from Ms. Wetzel was, "Well, there's other factors, there's other considerations, there's standardized tests." I contacted the guidance counselors, Mrs. Miller, I said, "What do you think about this?" She deflected back to the teacher. I'm extremely frustrated by the placement. In my opinion and my assessment is that it's treated like a country club, that I think the board needs to take a hard look at that middle school and question everyone who's recommended. Is it a who-you-know type situation, that students who don't make the ninety-five metric get a weekend and odd, and those who don't may not have long-term standing connections in this town? It's like we can brush them to the side. I will not allow for my child to be brushed to the side. I want you to have this full document that goes into and highlights where she was given Lincoln assessments, beginning of the year, sometime in December was the first Lincoln assessment that I saw, and it was seventy-four point whatever. She just had her final Lincoln assessment given by that same math teacher on April sixth. It was one hundred, and it was subitive. I will not tolerate being gaslit. I wrote all my comments and writing, I emailed, I emailed the superintendent here three times. She has not responded once. Don't know if I have the right email address, but it's all documented. So with that, I will close. I will leave this documentation. I will say that what is not in here is that my daughter has been in the orchestra program since third grade, just came off a wonderful reception on Monday, and when she won, I believe it was four awards, including Outstanding Physician, so I don't want to hear anything about, I see on the assessment that she doesn't understand fractions. She sure does. She's one of nine students who received that award. She knows a whole note from a half note from a quarter note, and it's ironic, and I uncovered the assessment from the beginning of seventh grade, which they may be looking at, and I don't know why, because we're at the end, but what was ironic on that is what I'm asking for is her to be placed in algebra, honors algebra, and her algebra assessment, for some weird reason, was higher than fractions, only marginally, in the beginning of seventh grade. But she's at the end of eighth grade now, so we need to be looking at the classroom assessments that she was given in class and administered by that teacher, that shows phenomenal progress, and the fact that her grade didn't meet the metric. And the other thing I'm asking for is that she also be considered for honors history, even though she didn't make the metric, her cumulative grade point average was ninety-four. However, during the fourth marking period, she has eleven grades in the queue, and every single one is a hundred, whether it's a quiz, a test, or whatever. So something is flawed in the teaching. If your teaching standard for the grade level doesn't match what the New Jersey assessments are in terms of whether people move, and I really strongly believe it should be the most qualitative example of what she's scoring on quizzes and tests that are administered by those teachers, because if you're under teaching, that's a problem. And that's all I have to say on that matter. And I'll leave this documentation with you. It highlights everything. It's eleven pages worth, and that's all I have to say on that matter.
Thank you.
Can I bring the business minister?
I actually just would like to respond. We, I can't speak to what you're talking about with your daughter only because I haven't seen the grades, so I will make sure that Mrs. Maleska, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, takes a look at it. I can't speak to two comments that you made. I, obviously, you know, I am the superintendent. I never received an email from you.
She said, "She's head of curriculum." I went straight, I, while he said, "Well..."
So she's the assistant superintendent. I just want to make sure.
Curriculum, correct?
Right, no, I just, I'm responding back to, you said you emailed the superintendent. I don't want to...
No, I said assistant superintendent, because I know she's in charge of curriculum. I didn't go with...
No, I realize, but I guess, I guess it was misidentification. Okay, it was the superintendent, just want to say that. The other thing is, in terms of, you know, it's not who you know, and it's what, you know, what you know is who you know. In this particular case, I can speak for the board. The board has no input on if somebody goes into an honors class they don't know, it's never brought to their attention, if they don't contact the administration in the building, and I can tell you, in the seven years I've been here, I've never received a request from one board member to ask me to look at a student, a friend, a neighbor, anyone, and give them any kind of special treatment. So I just wanted, you did make that statement, and I wanted to make sure.
No more than five years ago, the Zika family, my family, lives across the street from me, came across this board with a daughter with the same issue. If you need me to go around the paddles and collect it, what it was, was the board.
No, no, listen, no, listen to what I'm saying to you. You came to the board meeting, and you made that statement. I'm telling you, the board members do not contact the administration. They don't do that in the buildings. Their contacts come through me. In the past seven years, no board member has never contacted me or asked me if I would do a special favor and put somebody who didn't meet the criteria, whatever it was.
That's not what I said. What I'm saying is, in that middle school building, there is an issue. I didn't say that the board member in the middle school was in cahoots, but I'm saying that in that middle school building, there's something that's very subjective about who was placed and who was not, and all you need to do is tune in. I was shocked when I, as an incoming seventh-grade parent, and I went into that Zoom call, the very first thing Principal Whalen said is, "We will not be fielding questions about placement, da-da-da-da-hon," and it kind of floored me, as someone not familiar and coming into a Zoom call, that that's the tone he said with. So apparently, there's a lot, might not be here at this board meeting, but there have been complaints in the past, and I know for a fact, the Zika family across the street from me, and I'll get information because both their daughters have graduated, but the same middle school level, may not be the same teacher, they had some issues about, you know, high performances and not being placed. And I can tell you why that matters. You have something in your middle school document that says a student cannot apply or be a part of the National Honor Society unless they have three core subjects within honors placement. My daughter is given full honors Spanish. She's an honors orchestra, where she went to Biscayway High School for the CGM, that's perfectly fine. She's placed for honors science this coming year, but other subjects, it's like, oh, you know, it's a cash flow.
Well, Mrs. Maleska, look at it, we did just check your documentation. It is the wrong email. It's you who typed it wrong. So that's why, because we made it a point to respond.
I apologize for that. That's why I kept it and I highlighted it, because I wasn't clear about why I don't get a response.
Well, I'm sure Mrs. Maleska will look at it first thing in the morning, and we'll go through it, and then she'll receive a phone call back.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other public comments on any other item? Okay, seeing none. A resolved pursuit to open Public Divisions Act, that board meets in closed session at this time of the subconfidential matters pertaining to personnel, attorney, client, privilege, the proposed resolved matters discussed in a closed session shall be made public as soon as a confidentiality in the longer six. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
One paper?
Hi.
Peo, you missed board member comments. We'll have a nice night. We got another meeting, so we got, you can save and call for that. We'll give you very important section of the meeting.
Actually, Mary, hold your call.
Yeah, well, you're all down.
We got a whole nother meeting, a million names.
Mr. Both?
Here.
Mr. Chapman? Mr. Perrinella?
Here.
Mr. Giannakis?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Pender?
Here.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yeah.
Mr. Cassio?
Here.
Mr. Fenici?
Here. Before we conclude, we are going to administer a remove eleven D two sixty-two. So it won't be on there, because the person that was appointed for the closing position is also being designed before that.
Right.
Eleven D, eleven D two sixty-two personnel. All right. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Vote, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Perrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Here.
Here. Instead of closing it, we'll move right into the regular meeting. Okay, under number four, the board pressuring view of the goals. You have here the four goals and district goals. All of you who looked at it, I know some of you have already contacted, talked to the superintendent about some of it. I'm just now asking the data questions because confirming that they were met. There's no vote on this. Seeing none. Number five, additions, deletions, there are not comments from the public on proposed resolutions? Okay, seeing none. Number seven, proof required board minutes. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Vote, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Perrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Yes. Superintendent's report?
Mrs. Maleska? HAB report? Yes, thank you. I already reviewed these numbers when we submitted them to the state. Every year, we're required to do a self-assessment to determine how Antipaleontville writes grades. We score ourselves on HIV programming, training, instruction for staff, curriculum and instruction for HIV-related information, our staffing, school-level incident recording, investigative procedures, and then overall state reporting. For the high school, we had a score of seventy-one, the middle school seventy-one, Grant School seventy-six, Franklin School seventy-four, Kennedy School seventy-three, Riley School sixty-three, and Roosevelt Schools seventy-five. Thank you. Make a vision at the end of you.
Very good? Very good. Okay, moving on, curriculum A through F, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Vote, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Perrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Yes. Policy A?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Vote, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Perrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fenici?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, finance, one through sixty-seven.
So moved. Second.
Vote call, please. I'll get it back up.
If person, you're in person, you said-
Well, that's right. We're personnel.
Yeah, well, we improved finance, though. Let's just do personnel.
We need to discuss one, finance. You did.
Yeah, you did.
I did, for finance, instead of personnel.
Yes, you did.
No, they have a pill for that.
I thought I said personnel first.
Nope.
Finance, one through sixty-
That's why I've been saying D.
Okay, 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 guys. Long week. Um, personnel, A through H.
So moved.
Second.
Vote call, please.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Ms. Farinella.
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Pender.
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg.
Yes.
Mr. Casio. Mr. Casio.
Yes. If there's any family member on here, I'm here.
Thank you. And Mr. Panisi.
Yes, and just for good measures, finance, one through sixty-seven.
Second.
Discussion. Vote call.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Ms. Farinella.
Yes.
Ms. Giannakis.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Pender.
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg.
Yes.
Mr. Casio.
Yes.
Mr. Panisi.
Yes, and public comments. Any items? Seeing none. Board member comments? Most hopefully my luck. This time, is there any board member? Keith?
Yeah, um, this past weekend, we had Special Olympics down at DCNJ. We had about fifteen athletes went down there, did track and field. Um, came back with a bunch of gold, silvers, bronzes, and other placements. Um, one of our young man, I can tell you the quick story. He got up to the shot put, he looked at the other kids throwing it, and he said, "Hell, no." And he leaned back and he threw it. And he threw a four-ounce shot. And it's not like how you would think a shot put is thrown, where you spin and toss it. You just go ahead and just heave it like this. He threw it about thirty-five, forty feet.
Wow.
And I'm like, holy. But just watching him go, "Oh, hell, no, that's not gonna work." And he just, he whooped up on everyone else in his division, so.
Go for him.
We had some good kids down here. Young adults, let's put it this way.
That's right.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, first of all, thank you, uh, to everyone over the years for my children, because next Thursday, the last, and our mill is gonna graduate themselves.
Oh, wow.
And, um-
You don't want anymore?
Well, like-
I've got a fourteen-year-old that can have one more.
Well, I, we're good for now, but if you need some comments or advice, give me a call. We can, we can talk. But my, my point being, um, a lot of years have gone by, and a lot of great things have happened for my children because of all of you. So I say thank you, and congratulations to those retirees who had a lot to do with that, to our Superintendent of the Year, to Mr. Panisi, twenty years, God bless, and to everyone else here who made this year very successful. And let's have a great graduation.
A couple things, I don't wish you'd like to talk about these things, but, uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, uh, we are losing some really, uh, great staff this year, and they'll probably replace. And, and it's just great to see that, you know, there's a lot of teachers in this district that are here for the long haul, and it's, it's great, great to see. Two more things. This is Chris's last meeting as the broadcast guy.
You missed it.
Yeah.
And, uh, he, he, uh, wanted me to remind everyone, I missed it, I was, I wasn't here.
I know.
They got, uh, seven thousand dollars in broadcasts.
Yep.
And he, uh, wanted to know why I didn't say it in the last meeting about it, and I apologize.
I did not.
Baby brother. That's it.
Well, we showed, we showed the PSA today.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
You gave me hell.
Jimmy?
You want to start?
I was still down. Okay.
Uh, first of all, I want to congratulate the superintendent, uh, the superintendent of this county, it's a pretty nice thing, and it's actually, um, justification, if I could have a better word for it, you know? That's fantastic, so congratulations. And of course, John Pio, for your longevity and all that you do for this district. Um, and also, and I think he left thirty. I'd like to throw a shout-out to Mr. Wiggins again, because Riley's really- that preschool annex is really going along. And it wouldn't be right if I didn't throw a shout-out to him, so thank you, Mr. Wiggins. And lastly, uh, I'd just like to thank and congratulate and wish them the best, all these retirees. Uh, when some of the kids made into their Franklin School teachers, they were there when my kids were small, my kids were in their thirties. Well, two of them, anyway. And, you know, it was a long time ago, and I'm looking at them, and it's just bringing back the memories of that, and what a great, great, um, memory it is of, of this school district, and bringing my kids up in this school district. And thankfully, they're doing well for themselves, and they have great education here. Um, so I just wanted to congratulate them, thank them, and wish them nothing but the best in their future endeavors.
Um, I just want to say congratulations to all the retirees. We're truly grateful and thank you for all your years of service, hard work, knowledge, inspiration, mentorship, and everything you have done for the children of South Plainfield. As you begin the next exciting chapter of your lives, I hope you have an enjoyable, fun, relaxing, healthy retirement. You all truly deserve it. I wanted to thank Sarah, who's not here anymore, for all of her inform of high school updates, and wish her the best of luck in college next year. Um, our day of service was inspirational and successful, as our students and staff raised a lot of money. Did you know how many, how much?
Wow, we don't know yet, it's still, we haven't finished counting up, but it's definitely-
So much, we can't count.
So much. And then the brakes truck was on the way.
Um, through various fundraisers, all of which were donated to various charities of the individual schools choice. And I also want to thank Dr. Tansy for her insightful and imaginative idea this year to implement the day of service in our district. Also for her planning, coordination, and execution of this event. I also want to thank everyone else who helped make the day so successful. Um, all of you have helped to instill in our students what it means to help others. Um, we also want to congratulate Pio and John for their years of service to the children of South Plainfield. Congratulations to Moni on your Superintendent of the Year for Middlesex County. You truly deserve it.
Thank you.
Um, I also will be remiss if I didn't say it. I attended the tenth annual art show, which was breathtaking and sensational. Let me tell you. We have extremely talented students. If you didn't get a chance to attend it and see all the artwork in person, you missed something really special. And I'm just gonna mention a couple of things. The cutout skateboard projects were amazing, the portraits were stunning, the endangered species pastels were remarkable, the vinyl album covers were magnificent. But my favorite was the papier-mache pop art food sculptures. The Dunkin' Donut box, complete with donuts, was absolutely spectacular. Thank you to all of our students and our teachers for such an eye-opening display of art.
I tried to buy the wood flag.
It was really, they, uh, really, they are magnificent.
I tried to buy the wood flag. Did you see the wood flag?
Yeah, yeah.
Tried to buy that.
Did you? It was, it was really amazing. I took pictures. They, they, these students are so talented.
Can you go on?
Okay, okay.
Let's go.
Okay.
We're not going home anytime soon.
He's got a lot.
I do have a lot.
Um, I attended the senior letter winner dinner. Congrats to all of our senior athlete letter winners. Uh, we are extremely proud of you for always, uh, showing true sportsmanship on and off the field. Thank you to the booster club, our coaches and athletic director, Tammy Zerba. Um, the high school scholarship awards ceremony, um, gave out over sixty thousand dollars on scholarships to our seniors. It was incredible to see all the local organizations, individuals, and others who provided our seniors with scholarships to assist them with their educational pursuits. Um, oh, I just want to, uh, just a couple of announcements. I just want to let everybody know where our new New Jersey School Board Association officers are, because, um, that election just took place at the delegate assembly. Karen, um, Cordenelli is president. She's from Otville. Barry Fitzgerald, Vice President for County Activities, is from Lenapeed. Tom Connors, who many of us know. Right, he's now VP for Finance. He's from Biscataway. And Shanta Jackson, VP of Resolutions, is from Neptu. And, let's see what's on. Oh. Yeah, 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 yeah. He's now VP for Finance. And, uh, we are gonna have Carly Lord, Lord, who is a soccer ball medalist, will be the keynote speaker at the convention. And school board for October twenty-sixth is coming back to the convention as well. Also, we're gonna be doing something, um, I don't think it's up and running yet, but, um, we're gonna be starting, at least for this coming year, we're gonna do an unsung heroes, superheroes award. So what it is gonna be is that we can nominate a secretary, an aide, a parrot, a bus driver, somebody who supports our school districts, but really don't ever get recognized. So, um, that's gonna be coming soon, too, so we'll all be able to, you know, nominate some.
I thought that was already out there.
Yeah, yeah. All, all the people who don't normally get recognized. And then our new Middlesex County School Board Association officers, um, we have, uh, I want myself, but Gail DePain is our first VP for Monroe. Dan Harris is our second VP, legislature, legislator. He's from Woodbridge. Uh, Will Khan, Board Director's Delegate, is from East Brunswick. Kim Lane, Board Director's Alternate, is from Biscataway. Lucy Blue, intermediate past president, is from St.
What was your opinion? Lucy's blue, how was your opinion? That was the next election. Bill?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to add my congratulations and to Laquish's, all the retirees, and, you know, we'll see some of them around at different events, but they, they contribute a lot to the district, and they'll be missed. Um, perhaps to John and Pio for the recognition they got tonight. And, um, it took a while for Middlesex County, um, naming Dr. Tansy as Superintendent of the Year. But we've known that for a while in our district. She's been our superintendent, and the more people find out about it, luckily, we got over five-year contracts.
Just in time.
Yeah.
Everyone has a price.
The art show, as Sharon said, was like amazing. And when I got out of it, was not only that the wonderful art pieces, but the inspiration that our art teachers give the kids. And every kid has talent, and the kids work on that. And you, you see it in what they bring out, whether it's papier-mache donuts or vinyl record covers, which nobody knows what a vinyl record cover is these days, but some of the, the woodworking, and even going down to the elementary schools. It was just amazing to see what they do. And I also wanted to congratulate Chris on bringing the, the broadcast curriculum up to where it is today. And, um, I want to wish everybody a great summer. We have a lot of, uh, good things for the students and staff when the school reserves are full, so stay tuned, and we'll see you next week.
I'll try to keep this short and sweet.
I was talking about the side conversation. Now they had to say.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, congratulations, Doc. Well deserved. Uh, the district art show, I'm gonna echo all of my colleague sentiments. The district art show was fantastic. Uh, all of our students continue to, to blow us away. Um, even the ones that, that don't get that letter in the mail, it's not because, it's, it's not, don't look at it like you're less than. Don't look at it like, like you're missing out, because your artwork is just as important. Your artwork, um, is, is phenomenal as well. And if we had an administration building twice the size, I guarantee you, your artwork would be there as well. Um, the day of service, it was a success. If you went to any of our schools, there was phenomenal activities taking place. Um, so, so our second annual day of service is definitely a great one. And, uh, our charity softball game, we couldn't come together and accomplish it this year, but, um, a lot of us, my colleagues, either attended the, the fair that we have in town or worked the fair in town, and, and it was, uh, a success. I'm glad to see that we're back and better than ever. Um, but that charity softball game will also be back and better than ever next year. Um, uh, Coach Casio, uh, you came here and, and took that broadcasting class to the next level, and, and we're, we're definitely, um, grateful to keep you in the district and always have someone to rely on. Um, but, but, uh, Mr. Spurlock's son definitely has some big shoes to fill. Um, to our athletics and our, our music program, uh, congratulations on both of, uh, respectively, on both our athletes and, and our musicians. Uh, you are phenomenal.